It also sort of very clearly states that this reservation shall not apply until the Lok Sabha or Legislative Assembly of a particular state or the Legislative Assembly of Delhi is dissolved. So, that is the main feature of this proposed constitutional amendment. Is this the first time we are talking about? This reservation for women? Not at all. There have been four genuinely serious attempts to get this bill through, sir. The first ever attempt was in 1996 on 12th September in the 11th Lok Sabha, where Sri H D Devagowda was the Prime Minister. And that bill which was brought in was referred to a joint committee headed by Sri Muthi Geeta Mukherjee, who immediately took up the work. And within three months, on 9th December 1996, she gave her report. And the bill remained there for almost a year. But because of the dissolution of the Lok Sabha, the 11th Lok Sabha, on 4th December 1997, this bill also lapsed. This bill, one particular feature which I'd like to highlight is this bill provided for...
Rotation of seats, reservable.
So, it provides for reservation, rotation of seats.
Reservable. So, that's the first one.
So, the next one, second attempt made, was on 14th December 1998 by Sri Atul Bihari Bachpai's government, 12th Lok Sabha. In this, in this, the bill was almost identical to the one which was presented earlier. But a 15-year period was brought in. Now, this bill also lapsed due to the dissolution of the 12th Lok Sabha on 26th April 1999. A second attempt was made again by Prime Minister Atul Bihari Bachpai on 23rd December 1999. That was the 13th Lok Sabha. And then the bill hadn't been pursued at all because they couldn't develop any consensus of view. And again, this also lapsed on the dissolution of the 13th Lok Sabha on 6th to 2004. The fourth attempt, which is the most recent attempt, happened on 6th May 2008. In the Rajya Sabha, the bill was introduced under Dr. Manmohan Singh's government, UPA2. Very identical bill to the one which was previously tabled, which couldn't be pursued in the Lok Sabha. And this bill which was brought in in the Rajya Sabha was referred to a standing committee, Department-related Parliamentary Standing Committee on Personnel, Public Grievances, Law and Justice, on 8th May 2008 for examination. And it got passed, taken up for consideration and passed in the Rajya Sabha on March 2010. And then it was transmitted to the Lok Sabha on 12th March 2010. It was just transmitted. But till 2014, it couldn't be taken up for various reasons. I'm not here going to go into the detail as to why it couldn't be cleared. But it didn't get cleared and it lapsed. It is important for us to know that it lapsed on the dissolution of the 13th Lok Sabha on 18th May 2014. So, I may be pardoned if I'm repeating something which honourable members already know. There is no bill which is pending that I have to bring back here to say, "We'll consider this one, it's been waiting from then." No bill is waiting. With the dissolution of the Lok Sabha, that bill which was passed in the Rajya Sabha but which it didn't remain here, which naturally got transmitted to the Lok Sabha, also lapsed. So, there's no bill before us. Sir, empowerment of women in India is not a new thing. I just would like to go back in history to identify a few names which stand out for a lot of proof that is so required to say, "This civilization always held women high." Now, I'm not going to this thing, "Did we treat them as goddesses, give us equality?" I've heard a lot of members say with a lot of concern, "We don't want to be treated like goddesses, treat us equal." But it is a fact that we have held women very highly. And the women also had the courage to stand up and speak for themselves. So, it's not a new thing for us. I'll just give you the example of Satyakama's mother. An upanishad has been given in his name. He was a bright star. But when he went in search of his guru, the guru asked him, "Oh, okay, you want to become my student, but who's your father, would you please tell me?" He didn't know the name of his father. He goes back to his mother, Jabala, to ask her, "Mama, please tell me who's my father. I have to go tell my guru, otherwise he'll not admit me." And the mother had the courage to tell him, "I don't know who your father is, go tell this to your guru." And the boy, in all his earnestness, goes back to the guru and says, "Sorry, this is the reply given by my mother." And the guru understands the situation and readily admits him for his curiosity. That's the civilization we are talking about. It's not a civilization. We've treated women of one particular group or another particular group differently. We've treated all women with fairness. There can be differences during the age as we are coming down to today. But that is Satyakama Jabala. And Jabala, the mother, who could tell her boy to go say with pride that, "No, you'll know your mother's name, but the mother doesn't know the father." And the guru had no objection. Sir, similarly, when Adish Shankara had an argument with Mandan Mishra, there was a debate going on. And who was the judge there? A woman, Ubhayabharati, Mandan Mishra's wife. Could she have been admitted or accepted as a judge between the two people debating? If only there was some hesitation about dealing with women differently? They readily accepted her. She had the scholarship is one thing. But to accept a woman, to judge between them too as to who's going to be the victor also reflects that men in India learned or otherwise did not have a different idea of woman. And that Ubhayabharati's example tells us that. There are of course 22 women who contributed very richly to our Vedas and upanishads. I'm not taking each one of their names. Gargi and Lopa Mudra stand out. Similarly, I heard members this morning also recall from the south eminent fighters, warriors. I also will name Abhay, who was a great, simple two-line of horisms from her. Always enamors all of us. Karakal Amayar, who was a great Bhakti saint. She's treated as an ayana. So, in India, women have had a role in literature, a role in very many different situations. Women warriors, sir. Rani Abhaka, Kittur Chennamma, Velu Nachiar, Rani Gendullu, Lakshmi Segal, and of course, Janseki Rani. All of them, I've just given a random list. So is there prowess in science. E.K. Janaki Amal was one of the earliest scientists of India. Asima Chatterjee, Anandiben Joshi, Anna Mani, and Darshan Ranganathan are all women of eminence in science. So, we've had this culture of allowing women to do whatever their aspirations lead them to do and we've respected it. Of course, as they say in Hindi, vikrutiya have come into the system. We'll have to cleanse that and efforts are being made. Now, in this, I want to highlight, sir, that the party that I represent, BJP, has been consistent in its support for women's reservation. BJP held its National Convention in 1994 in Vadodara. And there very clearly stated that we stand for reservations of women, reservation for women in the parliament and also in the state assemblies. If that was in 1994, 1998, BJP reiterated its commitment for women's reservation by introducing it in the Lok Sabha, which I just mentioned a while ago under Prime Minister Atul Bihari Bachpai. In July 2003, BJP held the National Executive in Raipur in Chhattisgarh. And there they passed a resolution seeking one-third of all Lok Sabha constituencies to be converted for reserving for women. Progressively, that opinion has been refined now that in 2007, in the National Executive, it approved. Thirty-three percent reservation for all organizational position within the party. And in 2008, sir, BJP amended its constitution to provide 33% reservation to women in its cadre posts as well. And let me take this opportunity, sir, in all humility, to thank my party. I am one of the beneficiaries of this reservation for women that I'm here today. And I thank my party for having given me that opportunity. So, BJP has been consistently supportive of women's reservation, sir. I remember those days were early days for me as a party spokesperson. But the now lapsed bill, which was passed in Rajya Sabha in 2010, late Sri Arun Jaitli supported it passionately in the Rajya Sabha. And it was passed in the Rajya Sabha. Of course, when it transmitted to Lok Sabha, it didn't get through. So, BJP has been absolutely steady in its support for women's reservation. And this morning, I heard some honourable members also refer to some very picturesque moments when honourable late Sri Srimati Sushma Swaraj had waited outside the Parliament House, received Brinda Karat, honourable former member of the Rajya Sabha. And they both hugged each other in joy that the Rajya Sabha passed the bill and it is now the turn for Lok Sabha. So, there was a complete, across-party lines, a sense of wanting to achieve this. And today, we remember later Sushma Swaraj. And of course, even today, the activists and also former members of parliament who have all been pursuing this agenda. To further this point, sir, 2014, prior to the Lok Sabha election, BJP's manifesto, the Sankalp Patra openly said that BJP is in favor of bringing reservation, 33% reservation in parliament and also in the state assemblies. So did 2019 Sankalp Patra. So, just as Article 370 has always been in BJP's manifesto, so is women's reservation always been in BJP's election manifestos, be it 2014 and now be it 2019. Sir, Sankalp's Siddhi principle, which honourable Prime Minister follows very earnestly, is also proven by the fact that everything that which is mentioned in the Sankalp Patra is taken up to the level of achieving, that is Siddhi tak, Prapth karne tak, we follow it in earnestness. I also heard some members this morning talk about, "You were paying attention to Article 370, you were paying attention to Triple Talak, but you didn't do this women's reservation." I'd like to take this opportunity to say through you, sir, Article 370 has a very big women's component in it. In Teralia, it didn't allow women to hold property in J and K. Is it not important for them to have that on their back? They've after all been born there. Well, if they married somebody else from anywhere else, how right is it, under Article 370, to deny them ownership of property? Is that not important? Therefore, when we restored the normalcy and also removed Article 370, women, SAST, Bakarwal, all of them get their rights. That is why Sankalp's Siddhi principle of honourable Prime Minister makes complete sense. And between 2014 and today, these are the kind of achievements to empower women which have been happening. Similar is, I heard our honourable National President Shinadda speak about Triple Talak this morning. He said Triple Talak is not in A country, B country, C country, all of which are Muslim-dominated countries. But in India, it took us a whole process of going through the courts and again politically convincing our people and then bringing it in. But Prime Minister Modi did not hesitate. He said, "If that has got to be done for giving the rights to the Muslim women, we shall do it." So, Triple Talak also happened. So, Naddaji clearly explained, "We don't involve or indulge in appeasement politics." But it is important for us for restoring the rights of women because in women-related matters, sir, and I can say with complete confidence, in women-related matters, we don't play any politics. It is an article of faith for the honourable Prime Minister and therefore we do everything that we've done, whether it is Article 370 or whether it is Triple Talak or looking at now women's reservation bill. All of it is part of our manifesto anyway. So, between 14 and 19, I shall not spend too much of a time because yesterday, we all of us heard honourable Home Ministers speak in the Lok Sabha. He listed out the various measures which have been taken by Prime Minister Modi for social empowerment, for economic empowerment of women. I'll just very quickly flag off a few of them, sir. Vujwala for smoke-free kitchen. 9.59 crores of people have been given free connection. And 200 rupees subsidy per cylinder. And newly, we are adding 75 lakhs more connections. Swachhata Bhyan, providing a dignified life for women, providing toilets to them. 11.72 crore toilets have been built in this country. Beeti Bachao, Beeti Padao has actually helped in restoring a fair balance between gender because gender asymmetry prevailed all over the country. I heard honourable member Thambi Durai talk about how there was this cradle scheme which was brought so that children, as soon as they are born, being girls, are not killed. And that was a step sometime taken, some time ago, taken in Tamil Nadu. Many states have done many such steps in order to restore that parity in the gender, in the sex ratio. Sir, Prime Minister Modi's government is the one which gave from 12 weeks of maternity leave to 26 weeks of paid maternity leave for women. These are empowering women. What were we doing between 2014 and 19? These were the things which we were doing. So, we didn't forget for a moment empowerment of women. Water to the house for health reasons. Otherwise, they were spending hours going miles to get to drinking water. 9.82 crore new connections of Nal Sejal, Gar Garjal has been implemented. So, I won't go further into that list of social empowerment and the economic empowerment. But I certainly will take a minute, a few more minutes, a bit of considerable time if I would, if you would permit me, sir. Empowering women, they cannot be a more substantial measure than finding them in the armed forces. I'll list out the kind of things Prime Minister Modi has taken to get women have that equal treatment. Many of our honourable members saying, "Treat us equal, we don't want you to do puja or treat us like goddesses." No. Can they be a better place than the three armed forces where we have brought women to be at par with men? And they stand there clearly. I'll give out the list, sir. All wings of the Indian Armed Forces have women in combat roles now. Women are allowed in combat services and in supervisory roles. I'll start with the central armed forces, paramilitary forces. In 2016, Prime Minister Modi's government took a call, a historic move, decided to reserve 33% posts at the constable level for women in CRPF, CISF. And to begin with, 14 to 15% posts at the constable level in the bordering guards, border guarding forces such as the BASF, SSB and ITBP have been brought in in a phased manner. That's equality. That's treating men and women equal, literally in the uniformed services. Similarly, sir, admission of girls in scenic schools, unimaginable because there was so much resistance. "No, no, you can't do it." Admission of girls in scenic schools, with effect from academic session 21, 22, girl candidates have been admitted in all existing 33 scenic schools. That was clearly a step which was taken as a decision by Prime Minister Modi's government. Indian Army, sir, has opened up entry for women candidates in the National Defence Academy. You know how prestigious that centre is. And it is one of the male domains which you could never breach. But today, it has been opened for female candidates. 19 candidates, including 10 for Indian Army, joining academy every six months, women candidates, women candidates. Some permanent commission is also being granted to women officers in the armed forces. You may think that it is only in the armed forces medical corps or it's in the dental corps and so on. No. Or it is in the nursing service. No. Over and above that, now women are being given permanent commission in the armed forces as women officers.
Madhav, you can, you can, sir.
Sir, similarly, Indian Army has opened up avenues for women officers to serve as pilots in the corps of Army's aviation. So, flying their helicopters for the Army is done by women now. Women officers are also being considered for Colonel rank and are being given command appointments so they can lead commands. Also, sir, there are other ranks which are also getting in into the corps of the military police in the Indian Army, which has been introduced from 2019. So is the case with Navy. I wouldn't want to read each one of those steps. But today, whether it's Army, whether it's Navy or whether it is the Air Force, they are all being treated at equal with men. Agnivir scheme, sir. I was very happy to hear honourable member Sumitra Balmik. Is she here now? Yes. She mentioned it, sir. Women are getting recruited as women agnivirs. I was going to mention it, but I was glad to hear it from another member of this house. From the first batch itself, we have women agnivirs. So, now, without taking more time on talking about the larger issues, I'll come to responding to some of the members who have raised some issues where I wish to explain. Some members, Ramna Takurji, Casey Venugopal, Priyanka Chatrivedi ji, Pulo Devi Netam ji, have all raised this issue about, "You came to power in 2014. Why didn't you take, why have you taken nine years to bring this bill?" I think sort of I've explained it that we've spent a lot of time and attention on delivering on social empowerment and also on economic empowerment. In the meanwhile, you also saw how they have been empowered to get into the armed forces and the central armed paramilitary forces as well. Explanations and details with facts have been given by the Home Minister yesterday in Lok Sabha. Women have become now job creators. 29 crore women have also benefited because of the Mudra scheme where 70% of all beneficiaries are women. So, there are several schemes which has helped women to come up to some level. That's what we've been doing since 2014. Then, there was this question. I think in general, several members have raised saying, "Why a special session for this bill?" Sir, that simply, we've come into new complex, new building for parliament, new India. We would like this parliament to deal with one of the best bills that it can deal with where all of us agreed. And I'm glad to say this. I thank from the bottom of my heart for the consideration that all the parties have shown, irrespective of the little reservations they may have, questions they have in their mind, for extending support for this historic bill and this new building. As a first bill, handling this bill is, I think, a very good start for a building which is being built for the next 100 years for the country. Even if delimitation is going to come up with newer members, there's enough space to accommodate a lot of new ones. it was a bit disheartening to hear some members say, "Oh, this bill is a jumla." This is a very catchy word. Lot of people love using that word. But no. Whoever said it, I'm not particularly naming the members. It is not a jumla. This bill is not a jumla. I want you all to please attend to the points that I'm trying to talk. And the context in which the Home Minister said, I think, has been well understood. But it's convenient for us to use jumla again, no? So, we forget the context in which honourable Home Minister said it. So, the legal process. No, no, thank you. That was misunderstood or you're interpreting it differently. I don't want to get into it. Now, I'm talking about the women's reservation bill. Legal processes which need to be adopted for enabling this provision has been defined and described by a legal luminary. But I will certainly repeat it for us to know. And I'm sure many of our senior members here will appreciate that without amendments as regards UTs and without the delimitation happening and delimitation process is a quasi-judicial process. It needs an appointment by law. It needs a Supreme Court judge to retire to head it. It needs members from the Election Commission. It'll also have member representatives from every party, recognized party. So, it is not a, you know, exercise to push the decision further. But once we pass this and once the states also pass their respective law is when, and in the meanwhile, census taking place, with the number or the figures of the census notified, the ball sets rolling for a delimitation commission to come into play. So, unless we do it, and in that, I'll get into the detail why this 2026 stands out for us. Why 2026? Why can't it be earlier? I'll try to explain it as well. It is not something which we have done it. We are carrying a legacy where delimitation dates have been frozen, not once, frozen twice and for long periods of time. I'll get into that. But with these handicaps or with these realities before us, it shall not be possible to implement it now in '24 itself. Our intention is clear, clear it all up. And once the census is over and the delimitation sets rolling, you're going to have it the moment it is finished. So, no jumla, ma'am, whoever said it. But truly, it's going to set that course which was very clearly from a legal side explained. It also says, one of the discussions this morning, sir, saying, "Why did you have to bring it now? You're going for an election, you're probably worried about the election." No, as I said earlier, it is an article of faith, whether it is now, whether it is all the four times when it was brought to this house. Every time BJP has supported the bill, even that time when it was brought with, into the Rajya Sabha by Dr. Manmohan Singh, BJP stood out to support the bill. So, why would there be any hesitation in our mind? So, I just want to be sure that the points that has been raised by some of the members Sir, before I get into talking about the delimitation details, I want to pick up on Sri Binayav Kushpam, who seems to have forgotten the bill and said many other things about, you know, where are the women? you know, where are the women, why did you want to form a separate organization aside from RSS, why do you need a Sevika Samiti and so on? I'll, it's an, they are hundred-year-old organizations, all of us know how they are involved in public service particularly when there is a disaster, a cyclone, a flood, man and woman are their first, unclaimed dead bodies, they do the cremation or as per the law, whatever process for the ultimate end rituals, they are completely dedicated for social service and keeping people together. And if that is worrying the Honorable Member about why the women have not been taken in RSS.
Please, Honorable Member, I have not given you a flair, please, please sit down, no, don't do it, please.
Sir, why, why should there be a separate organization, why they cannot be part of RSS and so on? At least there is an organization keeping all the women working together at par. If you don't mind me sir and if you'll allow me this little bit of indulgence and with Honorable Member not taking any offense because he's spoken quite a lot, I'll rather respond with just one fact. Let me ask him, how long did it take for former member Brinda Karat to get into the Communist Politburo? To get into the Politburo? How long did it take for Brinda Karat, nobody else? It was public debate, it was a public debate to say Communist Party, you don't have one woman in the Politburo and it's not as if you don't have women at all, poor Brinda Karat had to fight away and now you're talking about RSS and Sevika Samiti? Please. Sir, I heard Honorable Member, I heard Honorable Member Kapil Sybil sir, talking about Finance Commission cannot allocate resource fairly till the census takes place and so on and that we are using a old census because I'm talking about, he referred to Finance Commission, I'm also referring to that but the idea was that the census, old censuses are being used. I just want to tell you sir, it was Prime Minister Modi who after forming the government said two thousand eleven census data was first used for the fifteenth Finance Commission which is, whose period is now current, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-five. Till before that, that is prior to that, since the seventh Finance Commission till the fourteenth Finance Commission which is before us, before two thousand fourteen, that is eighth Finance Commission for the finance period nineteen seventy-nine, twenty twenty, have used the census date of nineteen seventy-one. Seventy-one census has been used till two thousand fourteen and Honorable Member Kapil Sybil worries that we're using seventy-one, no sir, from the fifteenth Finance Commission which is currently, holds current say, which runs between twenty twenty to twenty twenty-five, two thousand eleven census is already being used. So I'm sorry, I want to just correct that perception of Honorable Member. All the earlier census, all the earlier Finance Commissions have used seventy-one census figures, we have updated it. So I'll just quickly go to. Quickly going to talking on the readjustment of seats sir. It's not a problem that we have created, it's not a problem that we suddenly, you know, realize. I would like to trace back as to why readjustment of seats has to go through a particular process and it's not new problem today. When, I'm not saying it's a problem but it is a situation which was created long time ago. I'll just tell you that. Article eighty-two provides for readjustment of seats after each census. So as per this article sir, seats of Lok Sabha allotted to the states as well as division of each state into territorial constituencies will be readjusted after each census. It provides restriction that such readjustments shall not affect the representation in Lok Sabha until the dissolution of existing Lok Sabha, just the core facts before us. In nineteen seventy-six, and this is where I'll draw the attention of the Honorable Members. In nineteen seventy-six, the forty-second amendment of the constitution inserted two provisos to this article. Forty-second amendment inserted two provisos which are under Article eighty-two and one seventy-three. First proviso provided as to when readjustment shall take effect and the second proviso provided that readjustment shall not be necessary until a new census is done and its figures are published. Published after the year two thousand. In nineteen seventy-six till two thousand, delimitation was kept frozen thanks to the forty-second amendment. So that during that emergency, you know, the infamous thing which happened, forty-second became a basket case where you put everything, adobe's list and passed it all. When the emergency extended period, the Lok Sabha after completion of five years ran the sixth year and did all this. So the forty-second amendment froze it till two thousand. Thereafter, this freeze till the year two thousand was amended in two thousand two, the eighty-fourth amendment and the year two thousand was replaced by the year twenty twenty-six. So the twenty twenty-six is not somewhere coming out of our imagination, the freeze in readjustment of seats has happened in seventy-six up to two thousand and in two thousand two it has happened as an extension till two thousand twenty-six. So as first census of twenty twenty-six will be undertaken into two thousand thirty-one until that period, there will be no readjustment and seat shall remain unchanged is the position. Now what we are trying to tell you here therefore is after the census now, which can start from early twenty-four in all probability, it'll go and once the census is completed, its announcements are over about the findings of the census, the report of the census, then the delimitation commission can be set and it'll do its job not just for the Lok Sabha seats but also to the states, then the reservation comes into implementation. So I won't spend more time on that sir, there's one more response I want to give. Sri Kesi Venugopal had mentioned that what happened in nineteen eighty-nine, I'm not repeating or quoting his words broadly, what happened in nineteen eighty-nine when Rajiv Gandhi introduced Reservation Bill for women in local bodies? Entire BJP gang, if I'm wrong with the expression or words, you may correct me, entire BJP gang opposed it, strong words like L.K. Adwani, Atal Bihari Vajpayee, Ramjeet Malani etcetera opposed it. So I just want to go back to actually what happened then. Nineteen eighty-nine, it didn't get passed. Opposition was there, lot of opposition happened, then of course as I said even at the very beginning, it moved to nineteen ninety-one, ninety-two and in ninety-two it got passed under PB Narasimha Raoji. But what actually happened then? BJP gang, no, I'm sorry, there are others who, it's very interesting to see. Sir. Because the centre-state relations at that time, and I'm purposely bringing this element, was such that it was felt that the Panchayati Raj Plan clearly aims at depriving the states of power to manage their own local bodies. This was the narrative which went into the opposition's minds. Chief Ministers like Sri Karunanithi, Jyoti Basuji, Devi Lal and Sri Enti Rama Rao, all of them made it clear to Sri Rajiv Gandhi that this was an issue which required a national consensus. So it's not the BJP gang sir, all states were standing up to say, sorry, you're taking away our powers. Huh? And I'm quoting here sir, Sri Enti Rama Rao, as reported in a newspaper, if you want I can always read this authenticated copy, said, Sri Enti Rama Rao, let the Prime Minister, I'm quoting here, let the Prime Minister seek a fresh mandate from the people on this issue and then amend the constitution. Sri Enti Rama Rao said this about that Panchayati Raj Bill. And misogyny, sir. I would want this to be finished and anyone who has an objection can please speak after that. So when it was metaphorically said, two members, two members came to Bengal, men came with money, media, muscle power, misogyny and mocked the Chief Minister, I, I was just plainly hearing it, I didn't think I got hurt. But I'm happy that you've already said substantiate it. Sir, I'm glad you said substantiate it and I, I thank you for it on the assumption that if it is not substantiated, it will be expunged. But why, why am I worried about any reference to any two men, I shouldn't really be worried, right? Agreed, that's how I thought it was. But when somebody from here objected to that comment and finally when it was not permitted and the Honorable Member was allowed to speak, he used the names and if I can recall the lines that he said, sir, he looked at you and said with aggression, sir, if whenever I take the name of Prime Minister Modi and Amit Shah ji, I get under their skin is what he said. Now if the two men reference, if the two men reference, if the two men reference was without any name, I will not be bothered. But when somebody protested it from here, the true thought was betrayed, the truth thought, the true thought was betrayed and the true thought was Prime Minister's Modi name and Amit Shah's name, whenever I take it, which is what the Honorable Member said, whenever I take it, I get under their skin. So everything ties up, everything ties up. I would humbly request you sir, I will humbly request you sir, that that document be provided here corroborated, substantiated, if the money, muscle man and the media have come or else apologize and the remark be expunged. Thank you very much.
Honorable Members. One second, one second, one second, one second, take your seat. Honorable Members, Honorable Members, take your seat. Please take your seat, take your seat, take your seat, take your seat. No, no, don't do it. Nadimal, don't do it. You are not in a forest area, you are in this house. I look into it. Dola Sen, madam, I look into it, sit down. Honorable Members, after a long gap, if I take my tenure of one year, one second, one second. Honorable Members, please, Honorable Members, I express my deep sense of gratitude for memorable, stimulating debate with emotive, I'm coming, I'm coming, I'm coming to that. Can't you some patience?